UBSUDD Live's Local Government Livestreams are presented by Plumus Lake Self-Storage in Plumus Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies, and Penske Truck Rentals. Details at plumuslakeselfstorage.com.
The items set forth in this agenda, each individual or group will be limited to no more than three minutes. Prior to this time, speakers are requested to fill out a request to speak card and submit it to the clerk of the Board of Supervisors.
Thank you. We'll do the pledge allegiance. I'll go ahead and lead that. Please stand and salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And roll call, please.
Supervisor Vasquez?
Here.
Supervisor Blazer?
Here.
Supervisor Fuer?
Yes.
Supervisor Bradford?
Here.
Supervisor Messick?
Here.
Thank you.
Consent Agenda. All matters listed under Consent Agenda are considered to be action items that are routine and can be enacted in one motion. And do we have any board comment? Seeing none? Any public comment? Seeing none. And a motion, please?
There was a motion.
A motion and a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Apparently not. I think we can... Would you like me to read this?
You can read it or you can reference it as written on the agenda.
Okay, we're going to... I'm going to go ahead and read what the Consent Agenda is. It's 48/2024.
That's what you already voted on.
You've already voted on it.
So a closed session.
Okay. Okay, we're going to adjourn to a closed session, and we will be doing that in about four or five minutes, and then we will return. Thank you.
Andy doesn't even need a bathroom break yet.
Good morning from the UBSUDD Live Broadcast Center. I'm Ted Langdell, and we are waiting for the Yuba County Supervisors to take action in closed session on negotiations for buying 19 acres of property that are on Hamilton-Smartsville Road, Avondale Avenue, and Northbeal Road. This is a big chunk of East Linda, and we're going to show you a little bit about what's going on here. These four parcels are owned by Daniel Hawke, and the Board is taking action to, as it puts it in this document, to further the Board's priorities identified in the Yuba County Strategic Plan. And so they're negotiating to buy this large piece of property here. I'll show you in just a second here. This is Northbeal Road near the corner of Avondale Avenue, and as you'll notice, this has been listed as available for quite some time. And it's basically what used to be an orchard in East Linda. Just after you go onto the railroad tracks on Northbeal Road, this is Avondale Avenue here, going this direction. This is Northbeal. There is a large warehouse that used to be a transmission shop that's now a office equipment place. They have a bunch of shelving there. There's also a car wash that hasn't been opened for quite a while. So what they want to do is buy this 19-acre parcel. We're going to take a little trip here via Zoom, or not Zoom, but Google, Google Maps. This is what it looks like from the corner of Avondale Avenue and Northbeal Road. And as you can see, there isn't much there except a billboard, so there may be some loss of advertising if the county acquires this through negotiation. There are some older houses down here along Avondale. This is an old walnut orchard. I used to live in the area here, 1965 to 1970, so I remember what this used to look like way back when. And there hasn't really been much economic activity on this particular piece of property in quite a while. 19 acres could be used for quite a bit of things. We're going to try to find out a little bit more about the Yuba County Strategic Plan and how it might further this particular property. There is, across the street here, Linda Water has some water facilities. Not quite sure who this belongs to, whether this is Yuba or Linda Water, or this is a part of the property here. As you can see, Avondale Avenue used to go along right in here, and then they made it curve. There's a little bit of drainage over here on this side. This is Hamilton Road. At one point back in the '60s, Hamilton-Smartsville Road used to cross the railroad tracks. This is also Linda Water's major facility here, so there is water along with what appears to be a diesel generator that keeps the pumps running when the power goes out from time to time, and a very large water tank. Give you some other familiarity. This is undeveloped land over here that could become homes, could become property, apartments. There's any number of things that this area could be used for if Yuba County acquires it. This used to be an auction barn back in the '60s, furniture and other items there. As you can see, now we're moving north along Hamilton-Smartsville Road. There are some older houses here. This is a March 2023, so this is a year-old, almost a year-old picture from Google Maps. And as we go up the road here, you can see that there's a lot of overgrown vegetation here. The address, in case you're interested, is 1445 Hamilton-Smartsville Road. And this goes all the way up to the Grove Apartments that you can see through here. Again, lots of undeveloped land, 19 acres they're talking about purchasing here. What they want to use it for, we're not quite sure yet, but we're hoping to find out fairly soon. Oh, and I'm showing you the Closed in Progress. So we're going to actually get back to the Google Map. My apologies there. So let's kind of go backwards from here. This is the Juan Diego Center, which is part of the Catholic Church diocese facilities in Yuba County, or at least it used to be the Juan Diego Center. Now I'm not sure what it is, but in any case, this is the Grove Apartments, and I'll try to find out a little bit more whether this particular parcel of property is included here. But this is the Grove Apartments that you can see, and I've got a map of the parcels that seem to be involved in just a second. We have, again, we're going westbound on Hamilton-Smartsville Road, taking a look at what this area looks like. Over across the street, there's also some vacant land that could be developed and used for something. If the county does something with this, turns it into apartments, commercial development, or a variety of things, it could spur economic development along this stretch of Hamilton-Smartsville Road. As you can see, there's a lot of vegetation that's grown up along the roadside. There are some houses here that look like they may be occupied. These pictures, again, were taken by Google Maps in March of 2023, so they're about a year old. This is Avondale, where it intersects Hamilton Road. This continues on down to Earl Road if you go straight ahead and becomes part of the Edgewater subdivision. This is, again, the Avondale Road heading north towards Northbeal Road, and this entire 19-acre piece of property encompasses frontage on Northbeal Road that currently has a little bit of economic development in one corner on the east side, but there's not much else there. Again, this is something that has had some activity on it, but not much in the last 30 to 40 years, as this part of Northbeal Road on East Linda has seen a decline with the Speckert Building Supplies and Speckert Home Store and the other things that were in this building my mouse is pointing at. But you see up here that this particular area has had a bit of a decline, and the properties being available, these parcels for 19 acres in here, could lead to quite a bit of economic development that would help spur the property values as well as build some more jobs. A little hard to see through the trees here, but you can see what used to be Yuba Automatic Transmission that's now a shelving company here. We will try to find out whether that is actually part of the parcel or parcels being acquired. Hard to tell at this point. But as you can see, there's been a good bit of improvement along Northbeal Road in the last five or 10 years, along with these trees that are going to grow up and provide a very nice shady look to Northbeal Road. This is the car wash I mentioned earlier while we were not looking at the map. And then, of course, also in the area here is the existing development of the shopping center that back when we lived here in East Linda was a Wentz Market along with Sprouse Rights and a number of other stores. And this car wash, you could actually wash your car. So this is the property that they're looking at. There are some property values that we can show you while we're waiting for the Supervisors to instruct their negotiators on what to do. The land is owned by Daniel Hawke. Haven't had a chance to research him, but let's take a look here at some property values. 1443 Hamilton-Smartsville Road, there were a number of them there. For example, this particular section of land, which is a... Let's see if we can zoom the map in just a little bit to show you. This is that corner portion at Avondale Avenue and Hamilton-Smartsville Road, and the assessed value for that was $111,000. We'll take a look at some other maps here showing other pieces of property, if we can get our computer to cooperate. So this is the chunk that's just north of that, fronting along Hamilton-Smartsville Road to the Grove Apartments, or what we were calling the Juan Diego Center earlier, and then this is the Grove Apartments here. So this parcel is included in this purchase. This parcel here along Avondale, which does appear to include the former Yuba Automatic Transmission, which is now a shelving store, a big industrial shelving like you'd find in warehouses. That's primarily their line of business. But it doesn't include the property that has the car wash. That's what I'm trying to think of here. It does include this property here, so all of this land that you can see... And we'll scoot over to another map that we put together here on UBSUDD Live. Give me one second. And this is basically this piece of property that they're looking at, all within the red boundaries that we've outlined for you here. Let's see if we can zoom in a little bit. There we go. So this is the land that they're talking about here, and we don't know what the property negotiations are going to result in in terms of cost, but it could be a million-dollar purchase. If this little section of land was valued or assessed by the assessor at $111,000 with some homes on it, it'd be interesting to see what else they may want. We may be able to go back over here, the Session Closed Session in Progress. Let's go back and see if we can find the assessed value of some of these pieces of property, such as what is this big chunk worth over here? So that chunk that we showed you that is here is $111,000 assessed value. That doesn't mean that's what it's going to sell for, but the land alone was $77,000, and there's quite a bit more. This was, let's see how many acres this is. It was last sold in 2004, and it looks like it's a one-acre parcel, so if you multiplied 77 by 19, just to get a rough idea, you could be looking at somewhere in the neighborhood of a million, couple of million dollars here. So what will Yuba County propose to do if they are successful in acquiring these properties? And we are interested in following up on this to find out what Yuba County may want to do with these properties here. Again, this is an overview of Linda through Google Maps. Here is the Walmart, the new Costco wholesale that doesn't show up yet on the aerial map. This is the entire area that they're looking at here, this large chunk of undeveloped land in East Linda. And this map gives you a good idea of what other pieces of property are available or are not developed in East Linda. This is another one that we talked about here. There's this L-shaped piece of land that goes between Hamilton-Smartsville Road and Avondale Avenue that then leads into the east... What am I trying to say here? The... I tell you, you get older, it gets a little hard to pull all this information you've stored in a number of decades. Anyway, the subdivision down here off of Earl Road that has been developing. Yuba County is also planning to do some development with this property here in Park Circle Park. There's this other piece of property over here, quite a number of other pieces of undeveloped land along Northbeal Road and elsewhere in East Linda. And there are some developments taking place in West Linda as well. So as the county gains more momentum, that's a Marysville term, but development in Yuba County is taking off, and as things enable more development, Yuba County looks like it's going to be trying to help foster that by acquiring this large 19-acre parcel that's in prime development land or prime development area along Northbeal Road and Avondale Avenue. We're waiting for Supervisors to come back and announce what sort of action they took in closed session. They've been in closed session for almost 15 minutes, I would think, at this point, and we are working on trying to keep an eye on what's happening here. Again, in the neighborhood, the Grove Apartments, Countrywood Apartments here, the SuperX Market in what used to be at one point in time a Wentz Market back in the '60s. That's when this area was initially developed, when Beal Air Force Base and unfortunately the Vietnam War were in full swing, and the base was home to B-52 bombers, KC-135 refueling tankers, and then gained the SR-71 and U-2 spy plane programs as the B-52s moved elsewhere. So what would be good use of this area here? This could be apartments. It could be economic development along Northbeal Road, apartments in here. Who knows? We're interested in finding out what the Yuba County Supervisors currently in closed session are interested in doing. Again, this is what the property looks like from Northbeal Road to Avondale Avenue. It's just a short distance from the former SP, now Union Pacific Railroad tracks that are located just by Costco, which would be over this green area here. So this is what Yuba County is looking at doing to foster some economic development. Right now, just a former orchard across the street from another piece of walnut orchard land that is between the railroad tracks and Avondale Avenue. If this begins to be developed, then it's likely that this other area would be developed. And there is certainly water available nearby because the Linda County Water Agency has its, or Linda County Water District has some of its water facilities in this neighborhood over here by these trees. Oh, and we're sticking on the closed session again. Well, sorry. Anyway, we're talking about this piece of property here that has been available through Mar and Tomlinson for quite some time. These pictures are from June of 2023 on Google Maps, in case you're interested in taking a look. Avondale Avenue, Northbeal Road, the only real economic activity going on is what's happening in this building, which was at one time built for Yuba Automatic Transmission and is probably 20 years old. Not a lot of stuff happening here. There is land available over here that was once a log deck for Speckert Lumber Company, which also at one time owned Speckert Building Supplies. This particular piece of property has been a garden center and was still in existence as of June of 2023, but I believe these buildings have been demolished. And I'll have to take a cruise out through Northbeal Road here to see what else is going on in Linda with that particular piece of property. This is just adjacent to Costco within walking distance, if you don't mind taking a little walk. But this 19-acre plot is what they're looking at acquiring, several different parcels that are involved. We'll show you those again here. This is one that is at the corner of Avondale Avenue and Hamilton-Smartsville Road. That is right in the curve, and then we're looking at other properties along here that includes this piece between the Countrywood Apartments and Avondale Avenue, working backwards. Also, this large piece that includes the shelving store and the rest of the property between Northbeal Road, Avondale, and the other two or three pieces of land that they're interested in acquiring here. So a very large purchase, that the land in just that little Avondale corner was valued by the assessor at $77,258, and if you multiply that by 19 acres, this is like just a little over one acre in size. So if you multiplied 77 by 19, let's actually do that on a calculator to come up with a more reasonable number. Math in my head was not a great thing for me to be doing. I don't know about you, but let's say 77,000 times 19 would value that at $1,463,000. So we're looking at a potential multimillion-dollar purchase of land here. We'll try to take a look at some of the other pieces of property that were involved here. Let's go back to the document on the agenda. So if we look at parcel number 56. Let's take a look and see what happens when we take a look at this. Hit the search button, which is over here. This, by the way, is a available parcel quest. This search function is available through the assessor's office, and the property detail here is for... It's sold in 2003 for $77,000, but we're looking at 10 acres in this plot. Let's take a look at the map. We'll back this out. So this largest piece of property that includes the building and fronts along Northbeal Road is a 10-acre plot in the Yuba Gardens tract. The assessor valued the land at $235,616. The structure was worth more, almost more than $427,000 for the building that you saw. Again, let's show you the map that's involved here. This is a 10-acre, a little more than 10-acre parcel, last assessed in 2023 for a total value of $662,964. It sold in 2003, 21 years ago, for $77,000, so it gives you an idea of how much land values have changed. This building built in 1996, and there's nothing really been happening with this particular piece of property. So again, if we look at 10 acres, let's just take the... Well, actually, let's look at some vacant land and see if we can find something out more about that. But this is Quality Store Fixtures is the business that's located there. And this 10-acre parcel here in Linda is what Yuba County Supervisors are currently discussing, negotiating details with the owner, Daniel Hawke, and any other property owners that may be involved. The county documents on this particular purchase indicate that it is owned by Daniel Hawke. And due to what they call time constraints, they're brought this to the full board for consideration rather than sending it through a committee process here. So the closed session that's happening now is to tell the Administrative Services Director and the county administrator how to negotiate for this property. They'd be discussing price, terms, and conditions. The four parcels total approximately 19 acres, and they want to acquire the property in what they're saying is to further the priorities identified in the Yuba County Strategic Plan. So we're waiting for more details to come out at the end of the closed session, and we're keeping an eye on what happens here. And we'll rejoin the meeting as soon as it's possible. But in case you're joining us late, and we haven't really been monitoring our Facebook or our YouTube channels here this morning, or sharing things, we're getting underway here and going into closed session quickly enough that it didn't leave us a lot of time to go share this in the places that we usually do, various groups on Facebook, among other places. This is looking at the property, the major 10-acre site from Northbeal Road just east of Avondale Avenue. In case you're just joining us, we're talking about Yuba County and negotiations that the county wants to engage in with property owner Daniel Hawke to acquire 19 acres that he owns in this area here from this curved portion of Avondale and Hamilton-Smartsville Road along the border of the Grove Apartments, including this building here, the Quality Store Fixtures, but not VIP Car Wash, fronting along Northbeal Road and Avondale Avenue and Hamilton-Smartsville. This large block of property here that is a large piece that could be valued at more than $1,400,000. Depends on how they negotiate. could be valued at more than $1,400,000. Depends on how they negotiate. And I'm working with numbers based on values that the Yuba County Assessor has assessed for property tax value in 2023. It looks like it was reassessed. So this inside of the red borders here is the land that we're talking about. Yuba County still in closed session. Yuba County Supervisors went into closed session about 25 minutes ago, and we don't know how long it's going to take for them to come back out and tell us, if anything, what they may have decided to do. Sometimes with property negotiations, they may just say there was no reportable action, or they may say, in limited terms, we gave instructions to our negotiators, but not tell what those instructions were because they don't want to influence the property negotiations. So this is the pieces of property that they're talking about. That includes this. This is what it looks like in a Google Map view from the top. Pieces of property include this section at the intersection of Avondale Avenue and Hamilton-Smartsville Road, where Rupert Avenue goes south into the Edgewater subdivision. It includes this landlocked, well, nearly landlocked piece, parcel between the Grove Apartments and Avondale Avenue. And it includes this more than 10 acres between North Beale Road and the other pieces of property to the south and east. These are the pieces of property that we've been talking about. The large, largest piece involved here is just a little over 10 acres. It's 10.9 acres, so it's almost 11 acres in size. The building that's on it was built in 1996 to replace an earlier one. It's now Quality Store Fixtures. It was originally Yuba Automatic Transmission that had been in this location for quite a while. VIP Car Wash, the unused, closed-off car wash property located here is not involved. But as you can see, there are other properties that have commercial development involved here, the SuperX Market on North Beale, the longtime Country Florist in what used to be an Arco station way back when. Across the road here is an undeveloped piece of property that stretches all the way back to the Yuba River levee, near where the levee broke. That actually happened right over about here, in back of the District 3 Caltrans property. Here's Walmart. And here's where the new Costco is. Looks like they've got other developments that are going on in this area here that are currently being constructed. So this is an area that is ripe for economic development. We understand this piece of property in here, in the corner from from the parking lot of Walmart, all the way to North Beale Road and the railroad tracks here, that we understand is is likely to be developed soon. There's also this property here, Linda Water has its water facilities right in here. Hamilton-Smartsville Road at one point used to cross the railroad tracks, but that is now has been closed off for probably going on 55, going on 60 years. Rupert Avenue, this is, this is the intersection of Avondale and Hamilton-Smartsville Road, and the property at 5931 Avondale that would be involved, that's actually 1409 Hamilton-Smartsville Road is what the address is on this little street here. And at one point in time, there was some development or some house probably here at 5935 Avondale. But this is all part of the property that's involved, 1433 Hamilton-Smartsville Road, and what was at one point in time on this particular piece of property here. It is next to an existing developed building here. Some of you might remember when this property was the Yuba River Still. And before that, it was Tony's Italian Restaurant. And before that, it was the Red Barn in the mid to early 60s. This particular piece of property at 1483 Hamilton Road, that would be the Grove Apartments, 1493, 1485, and so forth. It's also next to some other apartments. And it backs up to the SuperX Market Furniture Store, laundromat, hair salon, janitorial, the Country Florist Restaurant here at 1468 North Beale. So there's, there's 19 acres they're talking about here. And I hope you don't think we're yammering on, but we're kind of repeating ourselves in case people are just joining us and wondering what's going on in this closed session that we are waiting to end. This is a Yuba County Supervisors' special meeting, talking about the acquisition of 19 acres located along North Beale Road, Avondale Avenue, and Hamilton-Smartsville Road in a central portion of Linda, East Linda, just over the railroad tracks from Costco and Walmart. That particular piece of property that we're talking about, it's several parcels, 1, 2, 3, 4 parcels that total 1.9 acres roughly, and could have a value of somewhere in the neighborhood of 1.4, 1.5 million dollars. The assessed value is likely in the area of 1.4 or something. This, this parcel here is 10.92 acres. It includes an existing business building. There are undeveloped pieces of land here, and then some home sites that are here that don't look like they've had much activity lately. Again, waiting for the closed session, Yuba County Special Meeting to give instructions to their property negotiators. And we're waiting for them to come out. They've been in closed session for about a half an hour now at this special meeting of the Yuba County Supervisors. We're going to take a little bit of a side trip here to let you know what's going on later today on ubasutter.live. And that is the Yuba County Candidates Forum. So we'll be back in about a minute and a half, right here on ubasutter.live. We invite you to join us tonight for the Candidates Forums that begin at 6 o'clock right here on ubasutter.live, sponsored by the Chamber of Commerce and the Coalition of the Beale Water Tribe. You'll be able to see three different sets of candidates, those running for the Yuba Water Agency North, also for Yuba County Supervisors in two different districts, and the Sutter County Supervisors candidates that are running in two districts in Sutter County, both the extreme north end and the extreme south end of Yuba County. So stay tuned for that coming up tonight, beginning at 6 o'clock right here. It comes to you from the Yuba County Government Center. You will be live there beginning a little bit before 6 o'clock. So if you want to know what the candidates that are running for office in our Yuba and Sutter County areas are proposing, you'll be able to find out tonight right here, beginning at 6 o'clock, until about 9 o'clock tonight here on ubasutter.live. The Supervisors in Sutter, in Yuba County are gathering again. We're waiting for the closed session to end.
We are done with closed session. We're back in general session. And do we have a readout? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No reportable action on this closed session. So at this point, we're ready to adjourn. Thank you very much.
And that is the Yuba County Supervisor. Whoops. I'm sorry. We didn't have the audio up for that. They just adjourned the closed session. They had no reportable action, according to the county assessor, or not assessor, but the county council, the attorney. They gave instructions to the people that they appointed as the negotiators. That would be the county administrator. And let's go back and take a look at the exact documents that they had up to to give instruction. So to, the action that they did take today was to authorize the county administrator and the and the Administrative Services Director to negotiate real property. And that property is the property that we've been showing you all morning long, as this 39-minute or so session, to acquire this property that's currently owned by Daniel Hawk. They say that it will further the board's priorities identified in the Yuba County Strategic Plan. And they are being instructed on how to negotiate for the acquisition of this land by Yuba County, which has a potential assessed value of somewhere in the neighborhood of 1.5 million dollars. What the county actually pays for these pieces of property, and as you can see, the assessed value in 2023 of the land and structures totaled more than half a million dollars, 662,964 for this nearly 11-acre site here shown. But the other pieces of property that they're looking at include this one here, the one between that property and this property, and the one that's in the corner of Avondale Road and Hamilton-Smartsville Road. As things progress here, we'll try to find out a little bit more about what the county thinks would, what they mean by furthering the board, wiring this particular piece of property, 19 acres in East Linda, will further whatever those board's priorities that the staff has identified. So you are watching ubasutter.live. This has been a livestream of the Yuba County Supervisors in a special meeting to discuss property acquisition in East Linda. And tonight, you'll be able to see candidates coming up on both the Yuba County Supervisors candidates that are running for office in two districts. That is the second district, which represents District 10 along the Feather River, down into Marysville, represents all of Marysville, and most of West Linda. You'll also be able to see the third district supervisor candidate that candidates and the incumbent supervisors for both that district and District 3, which represents Olivehurst and a small portion in the southeast corner of Linda. You'll also be able to hear from the three people that are running for Yuba Water Agency North directorship, which includes longtime representative Charlie Matthews, the incumbent you see there on the left, former county supervisors, Don Schrader on the right, and Randy Fletcher, just recently retired from a position after, I think, three terms as the fifth district supervisor and a Yuba County Water Director, Water Director. And you'll also be able to see between 8 and 9 o'clock, those that are running for supervisor in the far north and far south districts in Sutter County. That would be incumbent McKelley and his challenger, also Matt Conant, you see there in the middle, the fifth district supervisor from down in the south end of Sutter County, and the two people that have been challenging him in the race that will be decided in March. All of that coming up between 6 and 9 o'clock tonight, right here on ubasutter.live. And the Chamber channel, which is seen from the, the Yuba, the Yuba Sutter Chamber of Commerce page. Our program this afternoon, or this morning here, is sponsored by our friends
ubasutter.live's local government live streams are presented by Plumas Lake Self-Storage in Plumas Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies, and Penske Truck Rentals. Details at plumaslakeselfstorage.com.
Hi, I'm Neil Goforth of Comfort Keepers of Yuba Sutter and Nevada Counties. Caring for elders or even yourself has challenges. Comfort Keepers of Yuba Sutter and Nevada Counties can help you address today's issues and plan for tomorrow with in-home and specialized care for you or your family members. Call us at 530-749-8800. Comfort Keepers of Yuba Sutter and Nevada Counties.
Here's what's coming up tonight on ubasutter.live and the Yuba Sutter, the Yuba Sutter Chamber of Commerce webpage and Facebook pages. That will be the Yuba County Candidates Forums, Yuba County, Yuba Water Agency, and Sutter County Supervisors, all right here, presented by the Yuba Sutter Chamber of Commerce, with the participation of the Appeal Democrat and our friends, that's us, right here at ubasutter.live. It's all coming up right here tonight between 6 and 9 p.m. So do stay tuned for that, or come back and keep an eye out. You can subscribe to our Facebook, our, our Facebook and our YouTube channel. There you go. I must need more of that Bridge Coffee. It's a little early this morning. So do tune in for that tonight, beginning at a little bit before 6 o'clock. The Yuba County Supervisors' District 2 and District 3 forum should get underway right about 6 o'clock, and then break, and then 7 o'clock, the Yuba Water Agency North Directors. And then after a short break at 8 o'clock, or right around 8 o'clock, we should see the Yuba County, or the Sutter County Supervisors, District 1 and 5 get underway. It's all happening here on ubasutter.live, where we give a cluck, among other things. That will be coming to you from the Yuba County Government Center, live tonight at 6, right here on ubasutter.live. I'm Ted Langdell. Hope you have a wonderful morning, because if you don't, there's not much else we can do about it. We've tried to keep you informed. Thanks again, and we'll see you soon.